All right, good evening. I'm going to call the order of the Shakopee School Board Business Meeting of September 23rd. Sarah, would you please call the roll?
Albridge.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
McIan.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Tomtik.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
And Barman.
Yes ma'am. Could you please join me by rising for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we can start with some good news. We haven't had that in the audit the last couple of times. Heather, you want to run up front?
Sure.
We're going to talk about you.
Okay. Radio is good?
That's good.
Okay, perfect.
This is Heather Baumbock.
Hi.
She is the 2020 Teacher of the Year for, and I said this one time so I don't have to say it every time, Minnesota Association of Family and Consumer Sciences. She's the 2020 Teacher of the Year, and we want to congratulate her.
Thank you.
So first, let's give you... So let me read some of the information we give. Heather's been instrumental in the growth and curriculum development of the Shakopee Family and Consumer Sciences Department. You teach at three different levels.
Yes.
Wow. Culinary classes, and is partner with Valley Fair and other businesses and chefs to help students develop their skills with professionals in the field, which is wonderful, actual real-life experience. And I have a quote here from you, I hope you know your quote, and the nomination for the MAFCS Teacher of the Year was a huge surprise. I'm so honored to win the award and hope to proudly show the amazing work that all fax teachers do in Minnesota. Very nice. Says you're going to be spending the year representing Minnesota in various capacities. And then you're also going to be an applicant for the American Association of Family and Consumer Sciences National Teacher of the Year.
Yes, so in June, I go into Baltimore and I present a body of work. And the body of work that I'm going to be presenting is the Juicy Lucy Challenge that I worked with at Valley Fair. Two burgers from our students were sold at Valley Fair this summer in July from Minnesota Eats. So I will be discussing that authentic learning process and how I got to that point with Valley Fair.
You can bring any Juicy Lucy's with you.
Kind of old and stale right now. No, so then I just had the opportunity, so I'll go up against all the other teachers across the nation. And so during this time beforehand, I'll go to different areas and talk about this learning opportunity. So I'll be going in February to the MAFCS conference where I will receive the official award and present that as well.
Well, your department is one that's really growing at the high school, too.
It is, we just hired, we don't actually. We could use another coordinator, but we just hired a new person for this year, and we hired a new person last year. And we're just running on the phone.
That's great.
It's awesome.
I have a question, and I'm always scared to do this because I don't remember if this is a rumor, if I made this up. Did you have, were you the person that had the actual Betty Crocker on our campus?
Yes.
At some point, and I heard she was incredibly impressed with you and love what you're doing.
Well, she is a family friend of Scott Doran's, and so Scott brought her in. And she indeed worked at, I was going to mix it with Cargill, but General Mills. And she worked in their kitchen facilities for quite a long time. And she was here last year to tour, and just a delight of a person. And she said nothing but great things to say about the department. Very humbling.
From my perspective, you know you're a great fax teacher with even Betty Crocker. Unbelievably impressed.
That's crazy. It was an honor. She was just a very sweet person.
Oh, you look pensive like a business.
No.
Any other comments or...
Well, aside from not being hungry for Jersey cheese.
That's true.
I'm not, congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, for all these great things, let's give her another hand. I'm going to join you for a quick picture.
Give me equal time.
Exactly.
Thank you. Okay? Thank you for that. Take a regular picture. There. One, two, three. Thank you, thank you.
Good luck, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll move to the agenda. Do we have any changes or came to order anything tonight, or permission to roll, go to flow?
No.
Okay, all right, so I'm looking for a motion to accept the agenda as presented so far.
So moved.
Same ma'am?
Except for Christie.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say a "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, we have our agenda. Move on to consent. Same thing. Unless anyone had any comments, I'm looking for a motion to accept consent.
So moved.
Yeah?
Second.
And Christie. What'd you guys?
We're waiting.
Time or something?
They were like a feud here. We're, we're...
That's right. We lost them?
That's right.
Any discussion on consent? All right. Hearing done, all those in favor, say a "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, we're into the meeting agenda. We'll start with item number six, which is Dave talking to us about the...
How did we update?
Oh, how did we miss that? That's 14 minutes and 12 seconds.
Is that what I got?
That's it. I'm making it up. And it's now 14 minutes and 12 seconds.
So we talked about this over the last few meetings and even starting all the way back to March where we started looking at some enrollment data. Today, we're going to look at the, kind of pushing that a little bit forward with a goal of having updated middle school attendance areas for the 2021 year. And I'll talk about the why behind that again, just to summarize that one more time. And then talk about how we go forward. I think some of you, I'm trying, I just got a new COVID handle. I'm having a little trouble. So here's, here's what is causing us to have to look at this. This is some data over the last five years for the populations of our two, what were junior high schools for four prior years, and then last year they became middle schools. So you see that originally, for some context, this would have been, this issue would have been resolved had we continued with the plan for Pearson becoming an elementary school. And I'll say, at each of the times, I think we were making what was the right decisions. And then when it came down to it with Pearson, I think the right decision was made at that time, but it caused this problem to still exist. At the time when these attendance areas started, which was nine years ago now, was it, was 11, 1112?
Yeah, spring of 11 was approved.
In April of 11, they were approved. So this is really pretty impressive, actually, that it's lasted this long. And at the time this started, with an odd number of elementary schools really feeding into an even number of middle slash junior high buildings, we had our two largest buildings, Red Oak and Sun Path primarily feeding into East, and Eagle Creek, Jackson, and Sweeney, at that time our smaller elementary schools, feeding into West, and it worked. It now, those, it's flipped over that period of time, and it's caused this divergence in the size of the schools, okay? Looking at this, it's a lot of numbers to look at, but this shows you where we ended the 1819 school year with by grade level at each of our elementary schools. That's this table right here. And then what I do here is take these and roll them into what happens when the fifth graders move to sixth? The fourth graders move to fifth, and then sixth in two years, and so forth. So that's what you'll see over here, okay? So you'll see what happens over time. Here's what East does, here's what West does. And you have to remember, this is all part of a projection as well, assuming that our population stays stable, okay? There's no growth built into this. This is just rolling kids forward year by year. I think that what you see here is last year, year zero, 1819, would have been a 316 student difference. And we projected with that this year for 1920, a 372 student difference. But as of, what was the 18th, last Thursday, I think that would be, or last Wednesday, we were actually under, the under-projected on that, it was projected at 372. The actual difference was 427 students, so bigger than expected, that difference. And so there at 1173 versus the 1142 that just rolling four kids forward does, okay?
Is that 427 more students at West or just less students?
It is both.
Okay.
It is both.
So more at West, less at East?
So we were, we were looking at 770 at East, and there at 746, we were looking at 1142 at West. And you'll see there at 1173. So it kind of went wrong the both ways, yeah, okay, for that, okay? So what this, just to sum up, we basically are using a feeder model. It's not perfect, where those two feed East and the three feed West. There's some Walker situations where it's not exact, but it's pretty close. I talked about this 427 difference and into the future, those projections, so it'll stay over 400. That difference creates challenges that I've talked about here before, okay? Good, any questions so far, so far around the why, okay? This is a updated projected timeline for getting this work done, all right? Since we met last, I did meet with our technology department, our middle school administration, and others around what it would take to do the work to allow us to register students. Before middle school registers, we need to have all this done and our backend work accomplished. They start registering at the end of January. Our tech department needs at least two weeks to push the kids into the proper schools. And it really involves also tying addresses to a particular school sequence. So their elementary would stay the same, but you need to change the address that feeds into each. And in order to make sure we're doing that properly, we're allowing a two-week window. So that, if you start with January 27th, is the start of middle school registration. You go back to January 13th, there's, there isn't a meeting January 13th. There's a meeting January 6th, which is a reorg meeting. So we're actually adding, Mike, you got to help, that's all correct, right? January 6th, we would need to add this kind of, we looked at final approval there. And then Mike and I even talked this morning about maybe even pushing the final approval up to December 9th because what happens between December 9th and January 6th is really a lot of downtime. So we're looking at possibly trying to get this done with action taken by the board on December 9th, okay?
And I think the other piece of that, the place in this timeline where more time is really welcome is the end. It's the planning, it's the registration, and when we rush it and we put pressure on that, that's when we sometimes run into problems.
One, would this enable us to get the records out over Christmas vacation so kids could read that during the downtime when they start thinking about it?
You know, we're only talking about middle school here, and I don't know if that, we don't, we're not looking to change their timeline at all. We would have, if they did that before, you know, and it's not even that part because the registration guide is the same for East and West. So they can still do that. It's just when you register online, the issues of not registering in the right school were significant. That we want to have that done first, okay? Questions on that?
Not a question, they're coming. I agree, and I think 12:09 would be a great date that we can kind of, you know, have the mode be done with it, if possible.
We're targeting for that, yep.
So I'm going to kind of go offline for just a second. We think we're going to have the audit prior to that, right Joe? A lot of times our audit is the meeting in December. I'm just trying to think of the agenda for that meeting, if you...
Yeah, we should be, we should have auditors here. Right now, we're planning the end of October.
Okay, so we would have our audit probably report in 1118 meeting. Would that be a pretty fair guess? The actual presentation of the audit, the acceptance of the audit in November. We wouldn't have to do that also on the 9th?
We're actually thinking October 20th.
Well, you bet, oh, that's what you're saying, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it won't be a packed house.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of what that agenda's going to be because I want to give this the time it deserves. So it sounds like the 9th is a target you're throwing it at, and it sounds like possibly agenda-wide, we can accommodate that, too.
So a question that comes down to on your timeline, you've got, we're at 9:23 today.
Yep.
And I know you've got a couple of dates in here for public meetings, for public feedback. Have we thought about, talked about being at some of the conferences?
Yeah, Ashley, I'm going to ask you. Ashley, I was working on some dates for that and what tables would look like into the conferences as well for both, for our elementaries and our middle schools. Can you respond?
We actually thought it may be better instead of having the tables, to actually have a presentation at both East and West, something that's not on the conference nights, that we were not taking anything away from the conference nights. It's when parents will be there, they will be there for the specific purpose of meeting with teachers. We thought it may be best to have two separate dates, one at East and one at West.
But you're, we had also talked about, and I guess, you know, we had talked about putting information tables up at those nights is what you're suggesting?
Right.
In addition to what Ashley said?
I think, I think that we need to. I mean, I just don't, people are going to be there, and even if it's a table with just a brochure and maybe there's one of us there or something to, if they have questions. I just struggle with presentations on a different night and how busy people are and capturing the attention of a good chunk of people. And at conference night, if they don't want to stop and get information, then they don't, I mean, yes, I understand it's for conferences, but I would think that people would be interested in learning more about it because this is a change.
I agree with Chris. Yeah. So what we'd be looking at just is, that's seven buildings, I think, because we would also want to do that at the elementary schools because fifth grade students are impacted. And there are three nights of conferences that I'll, I'm just laying out the volume here. Three conference nights at the elementaries, two at the middle schools, I think, which would be 15 and four. That'd be 19 potential slots that we would need to cover. So we would want to talk about that as well, okay? I'm not, I'm not saying don't do it, I just, we would need to understand what that...
I just want to make sure that we are in front of people and give people the opportunity as much as possible to get information. And I just, based on feedback from other presentations that we've done on different nights and the amount of people that are showing up, lends me to think we need to make, make a bundle of something in addition to...
And I'll say this, when we did this last time, we picked a couple nights and ran them past the, all the administrative team and still wound up with a conflict on one of the nights. And there was a, there was a perception that we picked that night purposely to make it conflict with something so people couldn't attend. And we want the opposite of that. We want, we want people to attend. And so if somebody wants to pick the nights that don't have conflicts, I nominate them to do so. Pick them, we'll go any night.
Could you simply just put something in the red folder, at least at the elementary levels, in the red folders? Make it simple?
Instead of putting it in the red folders, we would send out, we would print and mail postcards directly to parents of current fifth, sixth, and seventh graders. That way you know they're getting the information versus having the schools just put information in the red folders for the fifth graders.
I have something off-reading, but sending something over is a good place to...
But we have several options we can talk about.
Again, in addition to that, can we do some sort of an email blast?
We would do an email blast. We would put information on our website, we would submit information as a commentary to the local newspaper. We would use, of course, social media. We would rely on our principals to send information home via their newsletters. We have a variety of different ways to communicate with people. So no matter what we decide to do or how many meetings we have, we will publicize the information the same way we have in the past and give people those meeting dates as an opportunity. If they decide to show up, that has yet to be determined. But we will definitely provide the information and put it out there so people know it's available.
But I do, I wonder if, to Angel's point, if more than fifth grade, because it does impact families down the line, too, if we want to look at the younger kids.
Actually, I'm not referring to a flyer that tells you about an upcoming event. I'm talking about a flyer that shows the options.
It's like what's happening.
And that's what that would entail. So with the information, we plan to print and mail to them as well.
Good, so we have some work to do around the communication plan and working on the details of that. What that will look like at conferences, what a handout would look like, postcards versus red folder versus K5, which is fifth grade. Okay? So we'll get, we will add more information on that. Good? Okay, all right. So this is criteria that we've talked about. This is really similar, almost identical to what we've talked about in the past for criteria. These are not in a priority order. The real priority is capacity of our schools. And then all these other things are looked at as part of the soup of looking at what's the best options for us, okay? Taking all together, all right? This is going to be a lot to deal with. This is not new information as well, but I want to share this going into it. This is the list of known developments to the best of our ability right now, okay? And I know it's kind of small to look at.
Fifth, 10th, right there.
Yep.
And even using the word known is a little bit treacherous because we just had Michael Kerski come in and speak to the community that facilities task force, and you'll notice like gravel pits and farmland, they're known, but they're conceptual at this point. They could be developed, they might not be. So, you know, trying to get all the information on there is really important, but it's an inexact science at best.
So Mike is mentioning these two up here, that we don't have any idea of how many units, what type, or what impact that would have. That's why you see those blank there.
Or wouldn't they be built? He threw it out that they've been sold, but he didn't, you know, and then he went on to say something won't happen for a decade, some will happen in the next 18 months, right?
Yep, he was pretty non-committal about that. Okay?
Right after he said that Windermere, they said they weren't going to build it for quite some time. And they've been over there lately. Some of you are living there, yeah.
All right, so you're going to see some rent. This was another thing that happened last time is when we called a scenario 1A or 1B or 2B, that was meant to be kind of random and not have any value assigned to it, okay? So this time in the software, there's an ID number associated with each of these. So we decided not to name them, not to put a 1 or an A, and the here, or smaller number doesn't mean anything other than that's what the idea of it was, okay?
Good try, dude.
All right, so when you see this, this is us saying, if we went with scenario 75, that is where these developments would land, okay? We talked about using fruits or something else, but we're going with...
It's good, Tomtik.
The idea is weird, okay? And I want to say one other thing about these scenarios. These are not, I, we apologize for this, and I think some of you know we ran into a few technical problems, but we think we're up and running full speed now. So some of these are meant to show and answer some common questions that we believe we would get, okay? So these are not what we're presenting for the board to act on right now, okay? These are not the scenarios right now, okay? And so they're not.
These are mockups of just how the software works and questions.
So this would be the true East-West?
This is one that we think is a logical question to ask. Would you just divide the district right down Marshall Road? That's what this is, okay? So you'll see that blue line, this would be West, this would be East, okay? So I'm going to teach you how to read the statistics as well right now. Questions about this right now before I even go any further? You see where the concentrations of kids are on 169 slicing through there, East-West as well. So if you want to make it a game, you can kind of predict. There's about 1,820 kids, how many there are at each in this scenario. Okay, here we go. This is a lot to, okay? In this scenario, it would put 939 kids at East, 878 kids at West. This is our, the capacities we've been working with. This is how many open seats there would be at each. This is the percentage of students that would receive free or reduced-priced lunch. It's all free now, but that's still the terminology we use. 32% at East, 45% at West.
What happened?
I made a mistake.
As I said, those were out there this morning.
Yeah, so the sped, specialized numbers, I had a question on those, so I blanked it out to go back and double-check it and did not put it in there. They were similar, I'll just tell you that, okay? And then the percentage of second language students, English learners at each, okay? And I'm going to uncover this gray box in a second, but I don't want that to be the focus, so I'll show you what's under there. And then this is the number of kids that would change from East. So 19 kids that would have gone to East would go to West. 31 current sixth graders that are going to East would switch to West. 60 current seventh graders that are at East would switch to West, and vice versa. This is kind of what you would expect because we need to get more kids out of West and East, okay? Questions before I reveal what's beneath the gray box? Any questions about how to read this?
No, it seems out last night.
It's not out of this.
I mean, it's amazing how we just went down Marshall Road and how balanced.
It's pretty good.
I'm surprised it's that close.
Yes, I'm shocked.
Yeah, so because the develop, this, this is what happens if you develop...
Yeah, we're involved with development, is it going to be West or is it going to be East?
Yeah, so... Based on the developments, and the reason we don't want to put that out there is the prime consider... There's so much unknown when it comes to the developments. In this scenario, 100, you know, how quick are they built out? What's your multiplier? What's the mix of housing unit types? All those are in there. So if they were all built out, if they were built out as planned, if they had the same multipliers that we're using, this is what we would expect in each of those places, okay? That, that's not...
And this is just splitting right down Marshall. So somebody who lives across the street from East, that would be in West, might just say, I want to go to East because it, you're crossing the street. So that can make a little bit of a difference for more people going to East.
Yeah, and I think, Joe, again, if this were an actual scenario, we would probably create a walking zone.
Right.
Just if somebody lives, you know, 100 feet from the door of the school, most likely we would capture.
Right, so each would be a little bit more than projected, just based on that.
Yeah, and in this case, it would shift the balance in the wrong direction, doing that.
But if it's not dramatic, we, I think when we looked at that for the current world, it shifts about 20 kids.
Do you remember what the sped numbers were? Were they dramatically different from...
No, they were almost identical. And the reason I took them out is because I thought we were undercounting. It was showing about 16... we were undercounting, it was showing about 7 or 8% at both schools, I mean, they were, they were almost dead on, and then I thought, boy, 7 or 8% seem too low to me, so I wanted to go back and re-get it, but I didn't, so, so they were close.
And this is three to five years is what we're hoping to get out of this, is that what you had on your earlier slide?
That would be, that would be great, I mean, people, once they do this, they want it to last longer, like we did this time, nine years, okay? There's one other set, it's data related to each scenario, and I'll show you that now. This is almost a repeat of what you saw before, it's that projecting it out multiple years. This is how many kindergarteners would currently be in east of Marshall, currently number of kindergarteners west of Marshall, and so on, and then I, we just roll those up, and you see this kindergarten class of 261 and 271, you see they would be sixth graders in 25, 26, there and there, got the idea? Just feeds it into there. So this, for a number of, it, it's not bad, just that straight Marshall, okay? Questions?
Are we really losing them in students?
Our younger classes are smaller than our, our older classes, that, that's the question. And when we do try to take the development into account, we're not sliding them into any grade, that's just a gross count, okay? So it's hard to say what that impact will be. You got it, so I'm going to show you another one here. This is another, this is 94, or you can tell what we.
Try to name this one once.
Yeah. If they did 169.
It splits north-south, they're going to use west.
Okay. So, there's the map. This puts, I assigned the kids south of 169 to east, and the kids north of 169 to west in this scenario, and you can see it creates quite a bit of difference, we have more kids living south of 169, and the free and reduced is quite divergent as well, north versus south of 169. And I did have this, this is those numbers where I wanted to double-check, I did everything, you can see they're really close, but I, I don't, those numbers, I, I don't think they're right.
It feels like it's missing a grade.
I feel like it's missed.
Maybe more.
Or, or they were set up by disability categoricals, I think we might have missed something there. Okay, and you can also see the EL quite different. Development, all on the south side essentially, so that's not surprising. Okay? And you can see this difference doesn't really change over time, it stays 300 plus. All right? Number 70, this is just a random kind of grab to try and do some equalization between the two sides, it's, it uses Marshall kind of with some adjustments, scenario 70. This is getting more toward how we would, you know, start to actually do this and produce some scenarios that we would present officially. I'm going to keep just, I think you know how to read it now and what you're looking at. And there's that six-year look, okay? Both of these stay under their capacity, and if we were off by 100 between the two, it's, if that's where we were right now, we probably wouldn't be looking at this. And here's the last one for today, this is just the same thing, playing around with that north-south. What is unique about this one is we, as we played around, this is not a primary thoroughfare, although it's a straight northwest that kind of cuts through.
Is that independence?
That one's not independence, it's.
Williams and Cardinal.
Oh, really?
Oh.
It's very biographical.
That's two points over from there.
So it, it's us.
But when you see the balance, you'll.
Understand what's.
The nuts of this is really.
Gets really close.
You see that it makes things fairly close there, there's that built-out again.
Oh, wow.
And here's the.
But yeah, you're right, if you use residential street, not a main thoroughfare, it's literally kids on one side of the street going to one and kids on the other, it's a.
Yep, and depending on how fine you want to be, those are decisions that we'll have to make, okay? And, so, this is to kind of say, look, there's a couple ones that people are going to ask, why not Marshall, why not 169, and then, these are just us starting to play around a little bit with that north-south cut, and having east on the east side and west on the west side, there's some logic to that.
And then to Joe's question, that last one did have a walking area kind of built in for you, so trying some of those different features out too.
Yeah, and see how it bumps out. And every time you bump out one area and grab some, it, something else pushes out somewhere else that you, you want to respond to. All right, so, we are still, and our plan is, before we do public presenting, is to land in a spot for how we're going to do these particular items, so when we're presenting, we're getting feedback on the details related to the, the change. One of the things that we, as we've had discussions, and we don't, we can talk about it now or we can do this in the future, is there is some logic to maybe keeping kids that were in a school for two years, letting them do that third year to finish, and having the other grades change, that, that sixth grade change, because they have 72 years in the same one, so there's some logic to that, where the majority of your time would be there, okay? And we just talked about the communication plan and the staff adjustments and moves, if we do this per this timeline, we're totally good with that timing.
I don't know if I can make this assumption or not, Dave, but if you did that, where this, where the seventh graders stay, is that what it would be, right?
Yeah.
Would that effectively take a third of the movement off? It may not be quite even, Steve.
Yes.
But, so, okay, so if you had 130 being affected, you're down to 90, or something like that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's exactly right.
Just empirically, I like the sound of that, and I also understand the logic behind it, but we'd obviously have to see how that plays.
Right.
Play it out, okay?
So we might have one more year where there, it's a little more discrepant, and then it would correct more next year.
Now, if we do that, could that perhaps cause some pain points with families regarding siblings?
Oh, I think you're going to potentially face that regardless.
Yeah.
But does it remove one by saying, I've been here for two years, I've only got one more year to go, and now you're moving to a new building, so, again, we're not answering that question tonight, but I see the logic behind it, whether or not it creates other
I think we'll definitely create that for the kid that's going into eighth grade and wants to stay, but their new school for their incoming sixth grader is the other one, that we have to, we have to put a stake in the ground and say.
But that would probably be their regard, right, you know what I mean?
Yeah, correct, there's going to be something.
They can make that choice of, well, do you as a family want to stick with the old school or go to the, their control?
Yep.
Well, maybe if we said, okay, you know, the eighth grader can stay at west instead of going to east, but do you want both kids going to the same school, then they all, then they both go to east?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you think they could?
Good choice, right?
But it's still families making the choices, not we're telling them.
Give me half to this. Okay? And then, we took, we already discussed some of this, and Ashley talked about us accessing some of this, we brainstormed, talking about a video of some sort, explaining it as well, we don't know if we'll be, we'll be producing that, but all of these will be part of how we get this information out, we'll be starting that as soon as we can. Okay?
Good start.
Okay?
Can you get back to the timeline, I'll go back to the beginning. So, we're not seeing actual scenarios tonight, we're seeing how they would play out procedurally. We've got two meetings in October and one in November, if we were going to be taking action on the night. So when, just because I haven't read that word for word, when are you thinking you would come, not till the night, I can't imagine it's going to be on the night, we can see something, you asked, asked to act on it that night, so when is it you think, you have to do it in advance to then be able to answer questions about it at the meeting, so in other words, when do you think you'd come to us with a scenario?
Well, we have the 18th down there as reviewing feedback and deciding 100%, you'd probably want to see it in advance of that too, so I need some help with some games.
Well, we will see.
Thought we were looking at October 14th to rank multiple scenarios.
October 14th is a work session, likewise, the 28th is business.
So effectively, our next meeting? And I'm remembering that just to make sure that you feel that that's something you guys can do.
We absolutely can do that, that would be done, yes.
When are conferences?
November, October 22nd, at east and west, the 22nd and the 24th.
And not to belabor at this point, I know Dave mentioned it, but we ran into a technology glitch, and Sarah was working on this, and thought, oh, pretty easy fix, we'll call, get the person who came out, did the training on the phone, he got us to somebody else, they popped on, went, oh, we have to go talk to engineers, we'll get back to him, you know, short period of time, that ended up being a, then they thought they had it the next day, didn't quite, so it took their engineers a bit, we actually ran into a significant glitch, but it was right at the point in this where, when you build one model or MACHA, now you can just take and copy it and build a whole bunch more, so was that really a pivotal point? So that is up and running, we believe that that is, is 100% corrected, and so that will allow, I believe, to get that work done by October 14th. It's kind of like they shut us down right at the point where you want to just start flipping models and measuring.
So, short version is absolutely 14.
But what are you wanting us to do on the 14th, look at three and not, not show our in, our preference, or, because if you've got the conferences coming up before their next meeting, then the parents are in limbo, well, I don't know if they're going to go with this or even go with this one, so, I'm still trying to figure out the timeline for us, and when do you want feedback from us?
Tell me, well, I, I guess I don't, I, I'm not sure, I, I, look, if we can. You want, I want, I think the 14th still makes sense to have you guys look and say, these are three legit scenarios we are comfortable going out to conferences and public meetings with. Does that make sense?
It does, if you're, if the thought process is that we can have folks knowing it could be one of these three, that's the number, versus, you know, we looked at these and one of them really jumped out at us, and now we're able to leapfrog to the, this is kind of the direction we're headed, what do you think, Joe Parent?
I think if we came on the 14th, it would be to say, are these, we're, we're not picking or making a judgment at that time, that these are three legit, or two legit, or whatever it is, to take to these public meetings and start running these out to people.
Is that enough time to have materials and such for a week later?
And that's why I hesitated to have it at the conference night, because I didn't know if that was enough time, because if we're going out to the public, they're going to have questions, so I just wanted to make sure we're in a position to present information that is possible as one of the final scenarios or final options.
I feel like our hands are kind of tied, not in a bad way, but it's dictated to us, our next meeting's the 14th, we want to see it the 14th, the conferences are the conferences, so if we can do it, and Ashley and her team can pull it off, great, but if they can't, we're not going to not do this on the 14th, and we're not going to keep Archie toward the other end of the time, so I feel like we'll do it if we can, but I don't think we can.
I think so, but elementary conferences are probably better, correct? Or correct, yeah.
And the other piece of it is, we could come in with the plan of, yep, we think there's going to be three relatively equal competitive scenarios, it's possible that one might jump out and just go, wow, that just works and matches a lot of the, you know, there's, there's trade-offs in this, priorities and values, and something might jump out, I think the other thing, bringing it on the 14th, is sometimes, and we've got multiple eyes looking at this, it's nice to have a fresh set of seven eyes going, hey, what about this, and then hopefully we're able to answer those, we should be, but it's possible that sometimes you get too close that you miss something, so, it's hard to predict that, you know, and I hate that answer too, in some ways, the true answer is, it depends, because we haven't created those, and like Dave said, it might be two great scenarios, might be three.
So, would we be able to get the scenarios at least in board books that we can see ahead of time?
Yeah. So, that would be Thursday, the, right?
Yeah.
Third, which would be, fourth, what would that be then?
10?
10? Yes, yes. Absolutely.
Later in the day on the 10th?
That would really be appreciated, though, I think.
Yeah.
No, no, we got this, we got this.
The afternoon.
Yeah.
Even if, but if they're Friday morning, that'd be fine.
Yeah.
Thursday afternoon.
So, here's what I'm thinking is going to happen, we are going to come, we're going to pop these in there by the 10th, you're going to have them, we're going to talk about them on the 14th, we're going to be ready to go on the 22nd and the 24th at conferences, and then we will be having two public meetings shortly thereafter, mixed in somewhere, we'll figure that out, okay?
I think all of that can kind of play itself out, you've heard the desires which you share, so, I don't want to, I don't want to handcuff you guys too much, but the 14th is kind of a pivotal point right in front of us.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is, I mean, it's two and a half months away, right? But, so there's a long time here, but we, we have some work to do, Sharon, you want to get it done?
Are we, because I'm devil's advocate with the dates, are we rushing this to have a decision made December 9th versus January 6th?
That's the question I asked the mission, so that's a very good question.
Because I, I don't think that this is something we want to rush, I think we need to get this out in front of the parents and the public as much as possible, and just give them as much time as possible to react to it, and I just think that we're, we're too close for comfort to do that, and to do it right.
But I worry that if we don't do it on the 9th, we're going to shortchange ourselves and our enrollment and our staffing and all of those things, that's more critical to me, is to get it right in the execution than it is, I go back to last time when we did middle school boundary, nobody showed up, there was no feedback, there were no questions, this is not elementary, this is middle school, so I think we're overestimating the amount of communication.
Back to, to Chris, his point, one of the things we've done over time periods, when it's good for sharing that information with the community, and when you start looking at December 9th through January 6th, with holiday concerts, winter break, those things, it's a pretty small window that's really, really busy with family activities, so the prime time and trusting, and I, I, I see what Dave's saying, and I think October 14th is very doable, but it's a lot of work between now and then, and really want to hit that prime time for communicating, which is conferences and into the middle of November, and I think we'll do that, if we run into something along the way between now and October 14th, we can certainly revisit it, I don't think we're going to, we've left ourselves a little bit of wiggle room with the parentheses or January 6th, but I think it's very doable, and it really, I think it capitalizes on the time when it's best to communicate, when we can get people in the room and do that, and so, we don't feel we're sacrificing a lot between December 9th and January 6th, those are really tough times to hold public meetings and get people to attend, so.
Well, I don't think you were suggesting that, it just, we wouldn't be making a decision if you had. Well, I don't think you were suggesting that. It just, we wouldn't be making a decision if you have more time.
From a board perspective.
And if we needed that, we could certainly do that.
That's what I think. It's the parent ethic up there now. We find, we're getting a lot more feedback we're not anticipating. Then we can always push it out. We have some flex, you know, flex.
And I guess I hear, use time to sort of decipher that feedback and maybe, you know, make some tweaks or alter it or whatever. Certainly, we can do that.
And we kinda run this one to ground a little bit. So as far as the timeline, the next critical action is the fourteenth with a workbook ahead of that. And then we'll see how it all rolls from there.
That's a lot of work.
Yes. Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Okay?
Just starting.
All right. We'll move on to item seven point one. Matt, you wanna come on up? Uh, we're gonna discuss a request for a gymnastics co-op at Prior Lake Schools. Matt's gonna kinda share this with us, and we do have a recommend action thing, so I'm sure we're looking to act.
So thanks for having me. Just a little bit of history about co-ops. We have co-ops in several of our sports that we offer. So Alpine, Nordic skiing, and our adaptive sports, we currently co-op with other communities specifically to gymnastics. We had three families ask this summer if there are opportunities for a gymnastics program in Shakopee. And still being fairly new, I tried to do as much history as I could. But from my understanding, gymnastics has been brought up in the past, but it hasn't been seriously considered. So I think some of it has to do with resources and then just simply interest. So I guess my feeling on it is this is an opportunity to give some students an opportunity without it being a huge financial burden on our district. There's also two kinda points to it. The reason why it's Prior Lake is because, first of all, proximity. But secondly, in order to co-op, at least conference-wise, we have to stay within our conference to do it. So with Alpine and Nordic, we co-op with Burnsville. They're another conference mate. It makes most sense for us to do it with them. With our adaptive programming, we co-op with Chaska, Chan, and Prior Lake as a, as a big group, which is not abnormal. Adaptives usually pull in quite a few communities in order to make it work. So proximity to Prior Lake, but also that our conference rules and guidelines state that we need to stay within the conference are kind of our two main points for why we would try to get to Prior Lake to do the co-op. Just some history, it is a winter sport. It's a female-only sport. We would be asking our participants to provide their own transportation to and from, so we would not be on the hook for any transportation. And then financially, it's on a pro rata basis. So if Prior Lake has 20 people that participate, and Shakopee brings over three, we would just pay three twenty-thirds of the total bill. So I can't give you a great estimate, but it's significantly less than obviously even having a single coach or providing transportation. But I would think it'd be somewhere in the thousand to $2,000 per student.
Did Prior Lake, sorry, go ahead.
Do the students pay the standard fee that students pay to play any sport in Shakopee?
Yep. So then, you know, that would offset a small amount of it, but yep, they would pay our, our fee.
Do Prior Lake currently have a program?
Prior Lake has a program. So the, the two negatives that should be stated before maybe more questions or action is, even if we do approve tonight, Prior Lake still has to formally accept our proposal. And that could, excuse me, they could just say flat out, no, we've got plenty of participants. We'd love to help you.
Do they have plenty of participants?
They do.
Okay.
Yep. And that's one of the negatives for us even asking is that they have a full squad, both varsity and JV. So they're really doing us a favor by even considering this. And then the second thing would be, even if we do get approved, if we end up having, you know, say, people find out we have it, and yes, we just had three, say, they wanted to join this summer, but all of a sudden we get like six, or eight, or 10, or 12. Or, so that's one scenario, we get too many participants, or Prior Lake slash Shakopee co-op gets really good. Because Prior Lake, I think, is already a pretty decent team. If we kinda put them over the hump or something, at any point, one of our conference schools could ask, or a section school could ask, that we disband. And that basically is, as soon as they relook at it, then everybody's gonna vote us out. So I think it's important that we give kids opportunities, but I think we just have to make sure that we're aware that, although it'd be really great to have three or four participate, if this gets into something bigger, it could lead to a bigger discussion for us as a group.
Has that particular point been made apparent to the parents who are interested that the rug could be pulled out underneath there without any actual, on our part?
We were very clear with them that we, I felt like as a whole, this is an uphill battle. I, I still feel like it's worth fighting for because gymnastics is still a pretty big sport statewide. So it's, it's nice to give kids opportunities if we can. And what I feel like is a pretty financially secure position. We're not saying we're gonna go rent space, transportation, and coaches. And we've got a smaller financial burden on us.
When was the last time Shakopee had a girls' gymnastics squad?
I don't think we ever had one.
I, we never had the equipment.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I can't say for certain because I'm too new, but I think from my researches, we've, we've never had one.
We debated it years ago when there was some interest, but it would've been dedicating one of the teams at East full-time to gymnastics, which is significantly applying all the equipment.
Sure.
Had nothing. And then again, in the referendum, we had piled money and indoor sports facilities abound there. I believe I was not indoor. Were you on indoor? I was outdoor.
I don't think, it didn't, it wasn't even close to having enough.
Yeah, there weren't, there weren't enough students to build a dedicated gymnastics space. So I, I think this is a great opportunity. It does scare me that a kid could proceed in good faith and have their rug pulled out from under them. But it's better than not offering.
What, what does your, tell you as far as Prior Lake is, what they're gonna say?
I feel like in good faith, Russ Reed's their activities director has worked very hard to get him. Yeah. I think he realizes it's a good opportunity. We're both hopeful that it's a smaller number to start because that will help, you know. I, I think at the end of the day, because there hasn't been a ton of interest in the community as a whole, that we could stay at a pretty small number. You know, I think I looked it up. We currently offer letters just as a kind of a club opportunity for six students. And that's from seventh through 12th grade. I'm not sure if any of those six students are the ones who's a little bit coy with the people that were asking. But, you know, I think upwards of six would probably be max. It's probably gonna be closer to that three number this year. And I think they would sustain us if it was above three. I think our conference would feel good if it was above three.
So a couple of questions I have. How many, is there a limited number of people that can be on a team, varsity or JV?
Nope.
And the other thing is, at what point would numbers dictate us having our own program?
Yeah, I think that's where, if we get close to that 10 to 12 mark, I think that's where we would have to start deciding, you know, what, what our next steps would be. I would hope this would be an overtime thing. I, I would feel like I've kind of been, the rug pulled out from underneath. If 12 people signed up this year, then I think people haven't been maybe true to, or they just decided that, hey, we're always gonna be club gymnasts. That's kind of the difference, is either do a high school season or you do the club season.
Well, that's typically the narrative, right? There's a lot of our students who are in gym, in gymnastics, but they do club, but they do private. They're not this way anchored in high school.
Now, say, say the rug gets pulled out underneath us two years down the road, then, you know, then what do we do?
Yeah, then, then we come back to the drawing board and say, do we look at possibly seeing if we're sustainable to start our own team? Or we have to push them back to that club scene?
Or look for another co-op?
Or look for another co-op, but again, yeah, staying within the conference is our, our number one priority.
Does Burnsville offer?
Yep.
Matt, my question would ask going the other direction.
Sure.
Which is, if we had three sign up this year, is there a minimum for next year, which is one? Probably, I'd be happy to have that one sitting there, were part of this.
Sure.
And it's not a cost issue, it's just, so, so smaller numbers is not a problem.
Yeah.
It's the larger numbers where it could be.
Yep. Yep. The previous, I think, four or five years, they were at Jordan, and they didn't have a single person. So, but they just, Jordan wanted to offer them an opportunity.
So it wouldn't even, okay, that's, I didn't think of this question, but it would void the opportunity. We just wouldn't have anybody sign up.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean the next year we have to go through this process all over again.
Yeah, so, yeah, the high school league allows, they changed co-op bylaws. So if you apply for a co-op and we get approved, we stay a co-op as long as, you know, forever. Until usually it's, you get too good or you get too many participants, then they ask to disband, so.
Any questions for Matt?
Did you say how many students were part of the club currently?
Uh, there were, I believe it was six. And one, one of them was a sixth grader, so under high school league rules, they technically can't do it. So, and then I think two of them were seniors, so that would still be about that three number.
I was just gonna say, for me, I broke it down into real simple terms. I don't, I don't see us hosting a program anytime in the near future. I mean, that comes with high costs, we would need space. So the opportunity for these few students to participate is truly through a co-op. And I get that there's some costs there, but there's bust in, you know, all the Minnesota State High School League sports we offer. And so it seemed reasonable. And when Matt talked about HJ, I continued researching it. To me, you know, that's the, that's the avenue, that's the path that is available at this current time for these particular students.
I know that there's a certain male-female balance required by high school league. Does this affect that in any way?
I can't imagine this would, if we got huge, I think we'd have to look into it, but at this point, on the other hand. Do you feel like you've got enough information to act on this tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so, anything else, Matt? So we're looking for, I would be looking or asking for an approval, a motion to approve the pursuit of, because we depend upon that.
Yep.
A co-op gymnastics for Prior Lake.
Smooshed.
Paul, and second, Matt. Any additional comment or discussion?
The last thing is, we would be under Prior Lake Lakers competing, so.
Well, it's all.
For Shakopee, if it does go through, we would be.
Hell, that would, Matt.
I'm sorry. I, I thought, as you said, that I might wanna make sure.
You held it back, what, two more minutes?
Yeah.
Saber Lake. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Matt, for all the homework and good luck with this. Yeah. Yeah, thank you, everyone. Regardless, it's great that you're showing this on their behalf. We appreciate that. All right. Thank you. All right, let's move on to item eight, item eight point one, Community Dislodethat Force Update. And I'll turn to my co-port Judy to walk us through that.
All right. We met at Central Family Center last week, and personally, I found it really interesting. My, my first impression was Julie Ritter, the principal there.
Yes.
Great. She is so great. She explained a lot of things, gave us a quick, but a pretty complete tutorial on the needs of, and the different programs, first of all, which I was surprised to find out how many different programs there are. And then how it serves various groups of families and kinds of kids and everything. I was really surprised at the storage needs of young group. We went through this maze of storage that was sort of like House on the Rock. I've never been there before. So I thought that was all really interesting. Something that surprised me is as we kinda looked at, now we know a little bit about Central and we started to at least discuss Pearson, which is where we're meeting next time. And Pearson has more space, but you can correct me if I'm wrong on that. Central has more classrooms. So I thought they said that.
I think Ben said there were a couple more classrooms at Pearson.
Right.
But it was close. It was like 24 to 26.
It's just that the classrooms at Pearson are much larger.
Larger, yeah.
And that's why there's so much more square footage.
Right. So whatever we're looking at, it's not gonna be a, an even like easily done thing. Certainly some interesting information as we move forward. My, you got one people here?
No, I, I think that was a great summary. I think that going to the facility for people to see was somewhat eye-opening. I didn't realize that every single classroom in the building is real.
Every nook and cranny.
Yeah. I mean, it's, I didn't realize that. So that was interesting to me. And how, as you said too, the amount of storage and some of the original items that are still in the building. Obviously, they're not used anymore, but, yeah. You know, I guess the inside of the building is in great shape. I mean, considering how old that building is, it's very well-kept. It was very clean.
Very.
Kudos to the staff there for custodians. It, it looked great. It was better than what I anticipated it to be. You know, obviously, there are challenges there with air, airflow. We have a warm September already, so I'm sure that it's getting quite warm in that upper level classrooms.
Quite warm in that upper level.
You know, there are challenges there with water in classrooms. Bathroom facilities are some of the challenges that they have with the younger students. Just, you know, stairs is another challenge. So it was a lot to think about. So it'd be interesting. Obviously, we go to Pearson, it's a level.
And you didn't even mention the biggest challenge of all, which is parking and access.
Yes.
The site, the site itself is so overbuilt, right? And they, they, the building kept being had for two weeks, meaning classroom space, but it was, there's no green space really. And it's a playground and the parking lots, interesting in and out. And it's, as we've learned, frequently used, right? The number of kids in classrooms that are used two, three, four times per day. It's ins and outs all, all day, so.
The government, the government center being all ripped up too.
Yeah, because there are, this summer, they used, the government center used the parking lot for their parking. But they had put up signs for the beginning of the school year because we had people parking there and to have space for school. So that was another little challenge, but.
And of course, they even have later-in-the-day programs that include families. So, you know, it's used often and it's used extensively quite a lot.
But you may also read on the side that the staff loved that building quite well and have been doing what they can to make it a very educational, friendly space for families and students.
Very welcoming.
It's. Classrooms were happy. Yeah. I think Julie mentioned they are pretty maxed out as far as number of people they can take. And they have a waitlist on some of the programs because of the space available for students and parents, childcare. So that was another thing to take into consideration.
And we did look at other surrounding school districts, and I would say, at least those that we looked at, had larger programs than we do. We're kinda limited as to how large.
Just spaces dictating our.
Correct.
Yeah, and they turned up the neighboring districts. And I think, what did we have, 50,000 square feet? And most of our neighboring districts were over 100,000. Now Burnsville's on some flux because they're gonna be selling that Diamond Head Mall that they bought 30 years ago.
I've got, in my notes, that Prior Lake has 50,000 square feet. Lakeville's got 76,000 square feet. Eaton Prairie, in two centers, has 97,000 square feet. And in Jordan, they're in part of one of the elementary schools for their early childhood programs.
Was that low with R50 or was that high?
I do.
I thought we were in the world 50s.
I think so.
But the group's been great. I think we had 100% attendance again.
Yep.
And they've asked great questions and done great following up between meetings. It's been fantastic. Looking forward to the tour of Pearson.
That's next.
Yes, next week, isn't it?
Yeah.
And Ben did stress, Ben from the world did stress that, well, Central, the staff has done a wonderful job of, you know, making the classrooms, they're using them and making them friendly. Pearson's making buildings, so there's no staff to bring them home themselves. So he did warn the group that it's gonna be a little more sterile, a little more cold in institute, as opposed to fun posters and artwork and toys all over the place.
Yeah, that's understood, so. Any other comments or questions on this topic? All right, thank you for the update. Very insightful. Sadly, things continue to go well. Let's move on to item nine, and probably the big ticket for tonight. Jeff, you wanna come down and talk about? For a little bit. Should, yeah.
Yeah, you sure can. That's just fine.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the, uh, asking the board to approve the preliminary levy. It's for taxes payable in, um, coming year twenty, and this funds the twenty twenty-one school year. So, once we do this, we start building the budget for twenty twenty-one. This kind of gives us the tax side of, uh, of the budget. So, financing the public education in Minnesota comes from a combination of state aid, federal allocations, uh, locally generated fees. And then what we're looking at here is the property tax, um, component of our funding. And taxes are made up of operating referenda, capital projects, uh, so these are voter-approved, uh, building bond debt, and then discretionary levies like LTFM, Save Schools, and, uh, and building lease. And there's quite a few other categorical components to, uh, to list, but those are probably the, the biggest items. So, school district levies and three different funds. So, you know what I'm here reporting, typically on the general fund, but we have a community education fund, a debt service fund. That's the fund that's set up to amortize our, our bonded debt. So, you can see the, the various, uh, here, I guess, the size of those, those funds. So, general fund, uh, the proposed levy is, is fifteen-nine. That makes up forty-eight point three-three percent. And you can see, uh, community education, a small part of our total levy. And then our debt, our fund seven, um, twenty-three million. The proposed levy is twenty-three million, uh, and it makes up fifty-nine percent. So, I'm showing you the kind of specific dollar amounts, but we are gonna ask you to, um, to approve what you call the technical term, the maximum levy, because, um, a few board members, Joe, got a chance to look at the levy certification, the forty pages of calculations, and, um, there may be, there won't be any significant changes, but, uh, if there's something we may, or we report as part of our audit, changes of the LTFM, some of the adjusted levies, you don't have to come back as a board and approve that revised dollar amount. So, in December, you'll have to approve a specific, uh, dollar.
Jeff, just before we move on, for confirmation purposes, the debt service fund line is, if I correct me if I'm wrong, that's all voter-approved?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that sixty percent.
Yeah.
I'm rounding, but the sixty percent is something that, that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I might have that on slide, but that's, that's an important.
And that's all for Briskin Morder from, it's a big number, but we are growing district.
Right.
Right.
We're still, are we gunpaying off some pay? They were, but we've got several elementarys and, uh, high schools built and then doubled.
Probably bought, ordered from, um, bond issues that are on there at various stages of amortization. Uh, so then, just, just kind of, uh, looking at the change. So, I put the, the final, uh, paid, so the, the levy that's, um, that's funding this current school year, that's the pay nineteen, and then comparing that to the proposed, uh, looking at the general fund, it's up, um, I should add some commas in that, six-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand there.
Year pay.
So, it's not six-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars, six-hundred-and-sixty-six.
You gotta make up the rest.
Twenty-six thousand in community ed, there's a little change, and then debt service goes up, uh, four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-three. So, total levy change proposed is one million and forty-six. Uh, it's about, um, just under three percent.
Jeff, go back to the one.
Yeah.
On debt service, are we, are we mandated to collect a hundred-and-five percent?
Yeah, we have the levy for, I think it's a hundred-and-six percent, yeah. And, um, and then, and then what happens with that? That's so if there's delinquent, we have to, we have to make these bond payments. So, let's just say there's a year where there's a lot of abatements, uh, delinquent taxes. So, that kind of guards against that, that, okay, you're still probably able to make that, make those bond payments. Then MD tracks that fund, so let's just, so we did the six percent or a hundred-and-six percent, but everybody paid, so we really collected that. We start to build a fund balance. Then MD does not allow you to build an excess of fund balance, so the next year, one of your adjustments.
Dead excess, right?
Will be dead excess, and then we do, I think there's a small amount of dead excess this year, because a couple hundred thousands. Um, can I move on? Column here? No, I can't, this is P D T, so, um, voter-approved capital, so not, so, just some of the changes. General fund, capital projects. This really is our only levy that's tied to the tax rate. So, it's a, it's a, uh, percent tied to wherever that tax capacity goes. So, for, um, pay twenty, it's at three-and-a-half million, and pay nineteen, it was three-point-three million. So, a little bit of an increase, but that's attached to our increase in, in tax capacity. Legislative formula-driven, um, see our LTFM goes up, um, about what, one point, from one-point-eight to one-point-nine. So, this is that six-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand increase in the general fund. Just showing you the kind of big, big items that make up that change. And then expenditure limits, uh, building lease, I'm increasing that from one-point-six to one-point-nine. And then what I'm, what I'm showing there is an increase to, um, the ALC lease. So, if we, so remember, we're looking at twenty twenty-one. We think we're, we're talking about possible expansion, um, to the ALC program. So, we build that in now. Um, and so I increased, I did an amortization five years for a build-out, if we expand that program, and added about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the lease levy. And then, so you know, if it doesn't happen, or if it's more, we just wanted to get something in there, and as a placeholder, it's probably gonna happen. But our levies always adjust to actual. So, in pay twenty-three, maybe, uh, we'll report the actual expenses in that year. And if that didn't happen, it'll decrease the levy. If it's actually three-hundred-thousand dollars, it'll increase the levy. So, it's in there, but know that it'll always adjust to the actual, actual cost.
Sorry, I understand. That's the discussion we had with Eric about expanding the, the desire to look at more space, improve the space. This is having built in.
Right. So, knowing the board hasn't. Board hasn't approved, but, but we're doing a levy for twenty twenty-one, so we're anticipating that. And again, if it doesn't happen, the levy's automatically, uh, adjusted to. So, um, here's a fun slide that shows, um, so just, you know, maybe what you want to look at is, is, um, our tax rate isn't just a component of where that levy goes. There's fiscal disparities, there's TIF. Uh, so I just show that. I'm not gonna go through each item. But I think the important piece is, um, the tax rate, so on net tax capacity, uh, the tax rate for pay twenty is gonna be at forty-nine-point-six-nine compared to the fifty-two-point-nine-three in the prior year. So, tax rates actually, so you can have a levy, you can have a levy increase, but if you're, so on the, so I think when, um, I shouldn't say it's, it's, um, you look at that top line tax capacity, so that's information I get from the county. So, that's plugged in at pay nineteen, sixty-four million. Uh, on the tax capacity for pay twenty is seventy-one. So, you're looking at over a nine percent increase in, in tax capacity.
The pie's bigger.
Right. Yep. Same thing with, uh, with the referendum market value. So, so we have levies that are applied to tax capacity, levies that are applied to market value. Basically, uh, what's applied to the market value is the referendum equity transition. Those kinds of levies, uh, that make up about six total market value levies, six-and-a-half million drops a little bit, six-and-a-half million for pay twenty. But same thing here, you look at that tax rate, um, I guess, first look at that top line referendum market value, five-point-one, five-point-six.
Is that the nine percent you were talking about?
Right.
That you will be talking about?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So, that's not, so when I put that, when I get to that slide, that's why I use that, that's why I use that.
I always read the last page of a book, anyway.
So, I should just start it with the last. So, again, total rate drops for pay twenty from the ten, from eleven to ten. So, um, you know, we don't, can't show an example for every single piece of property in the district, so we kind of, uh, we say residential homestead assume no increase in market value. So, let's say your home is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, or three-seventy-five might be closer to average here. This is your taxes last year. This would be your, so now you're applying those new rates. Your, your taxes could actually drop by a hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, six-one-three percent, if there's no change in your market value. Then if you, uh, have that, so that average was actually a little bit more than nine percent, but people ask, why did you use that now? It's because that's what I got from that county. Uh, it's probably about nine-and-a-half percent. So, let's assume your house then is average, and that three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar home, uh, taxed, the rates from the prior year, twenty-three-ninety-nine, and then, um, applied to rates, the new rates, new year, and then increase in market value. Your taxes on that, for that three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar home would go up fifty percent, so when you, or fifty dollars. So, when you, when you do this and you use that, kind of that same, um, market value increase, it kind of ties into, then you can go back and say, total district levy up three percent, okay, then my home is up. And I didn't use the exact nine-and-a-half or.
And again, you're assuming a nine percent increase. Reg, you had mentioned earlier in our finance committee that the city was thinking six, six-seven. So, if you take six-point-six-seven, the tax increase would actually probably be even.
A lot.
Maybe even a little less, because if you go from one-fifty-two to fifty, that's a two-hundred-and-two-dollar increase.
Yeah.
So, that, at, whatever. So, yeah, it could be end up.
But again, I.
Be even.
I use these.
Again, how assessors do that, but.
But I use this increase because this is what the information we get from Scott County.
So, part, part of that's new development, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we talked about that in more finance, but, yeah, it's new, it's new homes, it's not just, it's not just increase.
So, on a three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar house, your net worth goes up by thirty-three-thousand dollars, and you pay fifty dollars. That's not.
But all that new development that we talked about in Dave's presentation for tenants' boundaries wouldn't hit, or until what, twenty-twenty, potentially?
That's not gonna be.
Right, right.
Yeah. Yep.
And it's gonna be a couple of years before it impacts.
And then I learned a few years ago, and it's probably not as important here when we're doing the preliminary, but when we're doing the, the final truth in taxation, I put here, school tax examples. I just put only in bold because I've had someone say, you said my taxes, I'm only talking, I'm only talking about this. I'm only talking to schools here. So, that is, all plays out. So, what we need the board to do, um, school board approve the preliminary tax levy at the maximum. Again, I just, I'll say that's just the technical term that MD asks us to use. And approval at the maximum amount provides the opportunity for minor calculation, and our technical changes to be made without requiring the board to reconvene and do this. Uh, and then we have our truth in taxation hearing scheduled for December nine. Uh, we have that hearing prior to the board, then, uh, approving the final. And that levy will be a specific dollar amount.
So, preliminary market values go out for twenty twenty?
Uh, probably November, yeah.
And then the actual.
And they use our, so they'll be using our preliminary notes. And so, if, you know, if we change something.
You can only change it now.
In December. You can only change it now.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. That's another, yeah, another reason for doing the, the maximum is because of their calculation that shows that we should have gotten twenty thousand more in LTFM. Well, we want, we want to do that, but.
You're right.
Can only go, only do a decrease.
So, it sounds like it's very, in, in, in my summation, it sounds like it's similar to what I read both at county level and the city level. You know, higher tax capacity, an absolute dollar increase, but a decrease in the rate.
Pretty minimal overall increase in, in the levy.
And actually, increase year-over-year is actually smaller percentage-wise than the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I was about to say, Jeff, I appreciate you doing this tonight. I'm familiar with other school districts that wouldn't do the part he just did. They would go right to the resolution and leave all the numbers for December. And I like this. I think it gets it out there and sharing it. It's, we can have a good discussion about what it means and, uh, be much better informed and obviously, even better informed on December ninth, so thank you for.
Sure. Jeff, let me, here, go, oh, sorry, it's the, it's the slide, um.
Sir.
Wait, I can't get that. Well, what I wanna, let me just verbalize it. It's the general fund increase, the community ed, no, I'm sorry, it's the, uh, I don't know the slides, yeah, six. I don't know where this has started.
The one that's got.
Six.
Kind of general fund.
Yeah. What I guess I'm getting is the first two of those three items are formula-driven. Is that correct? Nope.
Six.
Go to the next one. These two. They're formula-driven, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Then the latter one is the one we're saying we're building in an increase in anticipation of what we may do.
Right.
Yep.
So, it's not like we're trying to put something new out there or something else in. It's either formula-driven, or we're anticipating, or we might be on the ALC on the general fund side. But the biggest chunk is the bond referendum repayment, debt service, which is all.
That was all, everything in the budget, debt service.
I think that gets overlooked.
Is not approved.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to serve it by the maximum.
Second. Sounds like somebody was. Any other discussion?
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, all those in favor of the preliminary levy as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, man, Jeff. Good stuff. All right, Keith. Item nine point one, this is seeking approval of a health assistance contract. We've got a several of these, so this is probably consistent with what we see the pass. Thank you, Keith.
Good evening. So, this is a group that, um, went to the Bureau of Mediation a while back. They wanted to be affiliated with Education Minnesota. There's a moratorium on, you know, discussions. That's why it's so, telling that, that's why it's so late. So, we had to go through a lot of process to get here. Our negotiations were actually fairly short, so, um, what we, what we decided to do was, since the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year was behind us, we focused on just this year moving forward. That way, we didn't have to go through calculating back pay and all those kinds of things. So, um, this is, this lines up with other settlements that we had, similar, um, settlement total. This was ninety-six cents per hour on their wage, and then an increase in health insurance, seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars per year for family, so. Pretty basic. We started from scratch, but we pretty much used the, we had an association with, uh, affiliation with a, with an actual union. So, we pretty much just re, reused that and kind of used some new language to reference that, so this is our settlement.
Questions?
Thank you for all the work you've done with this, and it's an ongoing cycle with all those.
Yeah. This is a group, small group, nine, nine, nine people, our LPNs and our two-year cards.
And you said that you decided rather than back pay and everything for twenty eighteen, nineteen, you'd go with the zero and just pay attention. But they will get back pay for this year so far. Is that right?
Yes.
All right, I will look for a motion to accept the proposed agreement.
So.
Okay, Matt, and then to Joe.
Second.
Any further. Any further discussion? Comments? Opposed, they're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Last, kind of bigger agenda, item 9.2, we've got another chunk of first reading district policies. Kristi, you've been kind of in the saddle for a little while, but can you comment on these?
Yep, we had a policy meeting before our board meeting tonight, and we reviewed all of these policies. Most of them, not all of them, are basically just updates from MSBA based on legislative changes, statute changes. I mean, I can go through every singular change, if you want, or two, or.
Not on the first reading, unless there's anything that jumps out, you think you should share with us.
I don't think so. I think it's all pretty straightforward. I mean, there's one or two policies that have literally a change from a singular to a plural, or somebody forgot the letter A in something. So I mean, it's just.
The only change.
It's the only change, so very minimal, but we went through all of them tonight. And I, again, applaud Mike and Dave and Sarah for their diligence in going through these policies. And tonight at our policy meeting, Mike presented us with a kind of a better flow process to review policies, just from a clarity standpoint, to make sure that we're all staying on task. I think that was awesome to have something like that presented, so it'll help moving forward, make sure we've got our policies up to date with what we need.
Okay, good. So tonight is the first reading, we're not taking any action, we'll look to do that at our next meeting. So take the time to look at these and bring any questions or content. I mean, you could always contact your attorney if you wanted, but comments are thanked, but otherwise we'll look to act on these next meeting. Okay, you have the draw. All right, thank you, Kristi. Okay, we'll wrap it up. Let's go with other, and I'll go left. So Angela, why don't you get your, if you have something?
Hi, yes, I attended Southwest Metro School Board last week, and they are doing a tour on Friday, if anybody would be interested in viewing all of their facilities. It starts at 3:00 in the morning on Friday, and they will be starting the bus tour at their Chaska location. So if you're interested, let me know. I have all the information, I can send you an email.
What's the duration date this year?
It goes till 12:30. I have a permit and I'm going to be on the field, so just let me know if you're interested. Also, something really cool happened at our meeting, some of you have already told, but a client came to our meeting and dropped off an ambulance. So their group got an ambulance, and they will now be doing their two-step with an ambulance.
That's cool.
Awesome. And I learned a lot about ambulance, so it's fun. That's all we got.
Good. Matt?
Policy meeting tonight, and I just want to highlight Friday night's football game at TCO. My husband and I went, we had 200 students and pep band. We had probably, I mean, our fans were full, Eaton Prairie's were maybe about quarter full. So we had awesome representation, the students were into it, staff members that were there were into it. They had some Viking players there that were on our side of the field, that were mingling with some of the younger kids in our football program, and pictures taken with them and just, I mean, it was just an overall great experience for everyone. And I also know that we had some students that stayed and helped clean up some of the stands afterwards, which was awesome. So kudos, thanks to the Vikings for allowing us to come in and utilize their facility for this event. It was, it was top notch and great experience for all the students and student athletes that we have. So it was a great football game.
Yeah, I watched on TV. I'm sure that a lot of parents and kids taped it so they could see themselves.
Right, right. So great about.
Miss Ash.
Sarah?
Yep. Keith?
If we have anybody out there with a bachelor's degree who's really interested in exploring teaching, call our HR office, we can help you get a license to be able to do something.
Okay. Jeff?
Yep.
Okay, Dave?
Nothing else.
We'd like to cordially invite everyone on October 9th to join Community Ed meeting at the Marystown Church for Adopt a Highway Cleanup.
Cool.
At 5:00 p.m.
You bet.
Joe?
We had finance committee meeting before the school board meeting, and we pretty much talked about everything that we talked about here, so nothing new.
Okay.
Talked about Community Facilities Committee, and so we've covered that, but we have a facilities meeting on Wednesday.
All right.
I don't have a lot. Again, one thought this is for the board members, as part of the MSBA Annual Conference in early January, and I don't know the exact dates off the top of my head. Baker Tilly, the folks who did our community survey are presenting at that, and I believe they've asked Ashley and myself to present with them. And we would like it if there were a board member who perhaps was attending the conference and wanted to join that presentation team. So give that some thought, I'll send an email out the next couple of days, or if you want to reach out to me for more information.
Okay. Jeff? All right. We'll move on to item 11. If we have anybody that wants to speak, and I don't see anyone, so I'm going to dispense with that. Major reports we covered. So we've got several meetings coming up, starting with the Facilities Committee meeting this Wednesday, and then we jump into October, we'll be back. Oh, we're doing finance early, is that right, Sarah?
I'm sorry.
So we're doing finance on the 14th, not the 2nd meeting.
You know what?
I had, no, it's probably right, because maybe it's in relation to the audit or something. If it changes, let us know. But I see that we have finance and policy moved up to the first meeting of the month.
All right.
And then when our work sessions on the floor, you can do personnel and our next meeting on the 12th. So with that, I will look for a motion to, let's hear.
Motion?
All, 52nd. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Where are they?